Would everybody please face our flag and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for the time that we can be here together, with the city of Paramount, with its officials and with its residents that are here. God, the business is in hand. We ask for your wisdom and your direction tonight. We ask for your wisdom to do the business. We ask for your grace to fulfill that business. And we ask for peace in all of our conversation tonight. We thank you for your goodness, for your grace, and we praise you. Be glorified in our lives and in our living. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor. May I have roll call of council members, please?
Councilmember Ginn?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Mayor Martinez?
Here.
Are there any... At this time, our city manager would like to introduce someone in the audience.
Yes, Madam Mayor, before we go into public comments, we have a new school resource deputy, and we'd like to introduce him now. We usually introduce him at comments from staff. However, he does need to get back out in the field. So, he's our new school resource deputy. As I mentioned, he takes the place of Deputy Mike Abbott. His name is Caesar Kierls. Caesar, if you can wave in the back there. Deputy Kierls has been with the Sheriff's Department for 18 years. He's been working at Lakewood Station since 2007. He was assigned to Paramount in 2008 as a patrol deputy. He's been married for 16 years and has two children. And he's happy to take on this new assignment as a school resource deputy and serve the Paramount community. And I understand he'd like to say a few words to the council as well. So why don't you come up?
Good evening to all.
Good evening.
I want to thank, first of all, Lieutenant Beragon and Sergeant Ella for giving me this opportunity to work as a school resource deputy. I'm excited to be here, to work with these kids. And I got here in 2008, freshly off training, and I've seen the growth. I mean, this community has grown so much since I got here. Excited to be here, and excited to meet everybody, and hopefully I can do good for the city. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. We welcome you. Thank you. Thank you Deputy.
Okay, and then we do have one public comment card, Madam Mayor. It's from Ms. Andrea Crowe from the Paramount Library, and she'd like to discuss the library events.
Okay.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year Andrea.
Mayor Martinez, council members, and the city of Paramount. This month Paramount Library has a special event for every age group. For little ones ages two to five, our winter session of Smarty Pants Storytime, led by our brand-new children's librarian, Ms. Valerie, starts this Friday, Saturday 11th, at 10:15. On Thursday, January 17th, at 4:00 PM, Make Mo will bring dinosaur bone puzzles to the library, and children ages seven and 12 can become junior paleontologists. Teens ages 13 to 18 are invited to Adult 101, where they will learn the ins and outs of time management, on Wednesday, January 16th, at 4:00 PM. And adults, did you get a smartphone or tablet over the holidays, and you don't know how or where to get started? Paramount Library is here to help. We're offering smartphone and tablet help this Saturday, January 12th, at 10:00 AM. For more information on all our library events, please visit our website, lacountylibrary.org, or follow us on Facebook at Paramount Library. Thank you.
Thank you Andrea. Okay, at this time I'll have public comments updates. Do you have any, John?
No more public comment updates.
Councilman Callender?
Make a motion to be approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Item six, report of the live entertainment by Marisco Milindo Sinaloa Restaurant. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, council. This is the latest review of a live entertainment permit. And this instance, the permit is for various forms of live music at a restaurant on Rosecrans Avenue. They've been hosting live entertainment there, permitted live entertainment, since 2015. And Adrienne Lopez will handle this item. Adrienne?
Yes, thank you, John. Visual? Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. As John mentioned, this is an annual review of the live entertainment permit for Milindo Sinaloa Restaurant, located at 7610 Rosecrans Avenue.
Adrienne, why don't you just go ahead and do the oral, and then we'll catch... Oh, there it is. It's coming back on.
I'll keep going. Let me see. Marisco's Milindo Sinaloa Restaurant is located, as I mentioned, at 7610 Rosecrans Avenue in an M2, which is a heavy manufacturing zone, and it's owned and operated by Joaquin Lopez. It does have an ABC license for a type 41 sales, which is beer and wine for onsite consumption. Just to give you a very short background on this location, the live entertainment permit was approved by city council on December 1st of 2015. Although it was approved in December, live entertainment venues did not begin until March of 2016. We did have a compliance check. The last one was conducted on July 5th of 2017. One of the reasons why we're coming to you a little bit later than the annual date was because the business owner was trying to make changes to his live entertainment permit and was in touch with public safety staff, as well as community development staff, because they would need a modification to their permit. So currently, the live entertainment format is as follows. Fridays and Sundays from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM, they are approved for banda sinaluensa. And then on Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays from 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM, they are approved for norteña music. And on Saturdays and Tuesdays from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM, they are allowed to have hosted or self-service karaoke. Since the last review of the live entertainment permit, we have three documented calls for service. The first one is on October 1st, 2017. It was a call related to domestic violence. When the deputies reported to the location, it was noted that the business owner was in compliance with the live entertainment permit conditions. The second one, we have petty theft call. And that occurred on Monday at 11:08 AM. And this occurred inside the business, or I should say, it occurred outside of the business hours, as well as live entertainment approve hours. And it was related to restaurant customers who left without paying a bill. And the business owner was not desirous of a report. The last call that we have documented is for public intoxication. And that was on Saturday at 10:42 PM. And this was a female that was in a red Mustang drinking alcohol. And when the deputies checked the area, they could not find the disturbing party. Once again, the business owner was found to be in compliance with the live entertainment conditions. The analysis that we have before you is that the business owner has been in compliance with the live entertainment conditions in the past 18 months, and staff has not received any additional complaints or issues from adjacent residents or businesses. It is recommended that the city council receive and file the report, with the stipulation that the city council or that city staff conduct an annual review of Marisco's Milindo Sinaloa live entertainment permit. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Make a motion to be received and filed.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Item seven, classification study update. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. For almost a year, we've been working on a classification and compensation study for our workforce. Well, this type of study's never been done in Paramount. It's very common among the local governments. But because it's new to Paramount, it has taken us about a year to complete this. So, back in October, you may recall, you heard all about the compensation portion of the study. Tonight, you'll hear about the classification study. The classification study, what it does, it takes an in-depth look at all the job duties of each city employee and determines if the employee is classified in the right position with the correct job title. So similar to when we presented to you the compensation study, our plan tonight is to present you with an overview of the study and not take any action at this time. We'll then go back and huddle with our consultant and the staff from finance and look at both studies, both the classification and compensation, and develop a plan in order to remain competitive in retaining and attracting quality employees. It's possible that some changes could be made or proposed to you with the mid-year budget review, which will go to you next month. And others could occur in future budgets. As I mentioned, in October, we see this as kind of like the first step in a multi-phase, multi-year approach to protecting our most valuable asset, and that's our employees. So back with us tonight is our consultant, Ms. Jennifer Ramos from CPS HR Consulting, and she'll present you with the overview of the classification study. I'll turn it over to Jennifer now.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor Martinez, Vice Mayor, and members of council. My name is Jennifer Ramos, and today we will be covering these points on the agenda. I'm going to forewarn you that I'm going to throw a lot of HR terminology at you, but it's just in an effort to help you understand the method that we use to analyze positions within your city and to make allocation recommendations. I will also be covering outcomes of our study and some preliminary recommendations related to flexible staffing, so that you can more effectively recruit and retain your employees, as well as the results of an FLSA analysis, and then overall observations and recommendations. I have about 11 slides. I'll try to move quickly, but there will be time for question and answer at the end. So a little bit about the background. As John already mentioned, we have been in this process for about a year. Last January 22nd, 2018, employees received a position description questionnaire where they were asked to provide any documentation that they wanted CPS HR to consider in their allocation recommendation. We did receive back approximately 130 PDQs, but some employees worked in groups. So some of those documents did include multiple names. We also, in the next step in that process, interviewed about 68 employees and 12 supervisors. So we typically take a three-tiered approach. We want to get input from not only the employee, but their direct supervisor, and also from management staff as well, before making any recommendations. So the participation rate was over 200 employees for a city of approximately 300 employees, which is a pretty decent participation rate. What we were looking for at CPS HR is looking at the individual positions so that we can make allocations within the classification as a whole. And what we... The standards that we considered were the nature of work being performed, whether it was clerical, administrative, technical, professional-level work. Within the professional series, you can have all levels within a job family. So we're looking at entry level, which tends to be trainee or denoted by the Roman numeral one; journey level work, which is denoted by the Roman numeral two, entitling conventions; advanced journey level tends to be lead workers. And then you get into the supervisors, which are responsible for not only mentoring and coaching and leading, but the performance evaluation process, formally evaluating the performance of employees in management and above. We also looked at the allocation factors listed here. Decision-making, if they had the authority to make decisions that would impact their day-to-day work versus the department, versus citywide impact; the scope and complexity of the work being performed by the employee; the frequency of contact with the public, and in what capacity, and again, what... What the consequence of error of making decision in that contact; also supervision received and exercised, whether or not they have direct reports, the number of direct reports, what's the span of control that they have on a day-to-day basis; and then the overall knowledge, skills, and abilities, which determines the job description and the minimum qualifications. Other classification factors are listed here. As you can see, we looked at the entire job. We looked beyond the title. Often employees are really concerned that, "You're only looking at my title, and I want you to consider the whole picture." So we look at all of the previous slide factors, along with some of these factors. For the city of Paramount, it is a smaller city, and so broad classifications, in our opinion, are more relevant and useful. It allows for cross-training, more flexibility to move staff around. And so we did, in many cases, remain with broad classifications or recommend or propose broad classes. Point and time analysis is, since this process has been going on for a year, that's pretty standard for an agency-wide or city-wide study. So what we're doing is we're taking a Polaroid picture of the work being performed at one point in time, and whether it takes us six months, eight months, 12 months to arrive at final determinations, we're doing a deep analysis based on that one point in time. Again, we're looking at duties, level of work. We're looking at the classification of the position, not the employee. So administration is usually concerned with their individual employees, but we're a neutral third party that comes in and says, "If the city was to lose this employee due to promotion, due to attrition, what does the city need operationally in that position to continue to operate?" So we're looking again at the positions, number of positions within the classification. One class title can have 10 positions in different departments. We consider that. An allocation of the specific employee within the class. So for the city of Paramount, the results fell into three general buckets. About 80% of the results were no change whatsoever. That just means the job description may have been updated slightly. The title remained the same. The essential functions of the work did not change substantially. There were about 23% of the cases which were title changes. That could have been just to bring the title up to industry standards. One example of that would be finance clerk. We propose finance assistant and finance technician in those cases. That's to bring it up to industry standards. And then there were 6% of cases of new classifications. New classifications are warranted when there's highly specialized work or you want to create a career ladder to create promotional opportunities. In our report, we're also proposing the concept of flexible staffing. This is a recruitment and retention. It's an administrative tool that helps the city more effectively recruit at the very entry-level baseline. And rather than have a promotional exam, you can promote employees from within, once they're able to perform all of the duties and their performance standards are meeting the higher level of work. So this is a good tool that we believe could be useful for the city. We also conducted an FLSA analysis to measure compliance with state and federal overtime laws. We did not find any cases of the need to change from exempt to non-exempt or non-exempt to exempt for the cases that we studied. Some of the measures would be executive exemption, administrative exemption, computer or technology exemption. The threshold, the salary threshold for that is $913 per week or above. And again, we did not find any need to make changes here. So overall observations, recommendations. I would say for titling and career ladder purposes, we did propose three significant changes. The implementation of an information technology analyst series, with a minimum of at least two levels, preferably three levels; a star program coordinator and star program leader to distinguish the work being performed in those two roles; and then the creation of another level that does not currently exist, a senior building and safety inspector. Again, creating that career ladder, based on the needs of the city operationally. So I'll leave you with this slide. It's a nice visual representation of the full circle of what we've accomplished in this study since last year, January. Excuse me. That very first line at the top is the job analysis stage. That's what I've reported on today. All of the classification analysis we've done, looking at the PDQs, the interviews, determining allocations would fall in that first line. As a result of that first line, the next step was to look at the ranking and the value of those positions in relation to each other within the city. We did that piece, and then back in October, we provided you with a compensation report. And we went out to the labor market, and we collected data, labor market salary data, based on job matching. So what my team has done is we've gone back to the classification report, since I was a new project manager as of October 2018, and we've audited and validated. So I'm comfortable putting my stamp of approval on the class study results so that we can move forward based on defensible recommendations. And with that said, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Madam Mayor, I may add too, just for your information, we did present, Jennifer did present the same report to the employees this afternoon and this morning. We had two employee meetings. So they were able to interact with Ms. Ramos and ask her questions. And she did have some questions from employees as well. And again, this is an overview of it. The full report will be available very soon. We're just putting the final touches on the report. We'll have it available for the employees. We'll be bringing it back to you for your approval for the full and final report of both the classification and compensation.
Ms. Ramos, can you please give me an example of flexible staffing?
Sure. So what we're proposing is information technology analysts, creating a series which would be at least three levels. So you would be able to recruit at the entry level. Let's say you want to recruit straight out of college with a bachelor's degree and no experience. You can bring that person onboard, train and develop them in the ways of the city, and then once they're able to perform the full function of the duties, promote them, so that you can retain them and offer them the higher level of salary. So again, it's a tool for you to recruit and retain employees.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go first.
And it would be more a staff question. On the two positions for the STAR program, do neither one of those even exist at this point, or they have a different name? Because I thought there was a program coordinator, I think, is what it said.
There... We have general fund coordinators and our STAR Aces-funded coordinators. They're all just called coordinators. Then we have recreation leaders in STAR and recreation leaders in our generally funded program. So we're looking to add just the STAR name to distinguish them because their duties and functions are different.
So is it more a title change than a new position?
No, it's not a new position. Their functions remain the same, but we're adding the STAR in front of it to distinguish it from the other rec leaders and other coordinators.
Okay, and then regarding, I think it was a senior planning, in the planning department?
Senior building inspector.
And so I thought we had one of those before too. Is that something that went away with redevelopment?
It did, and then the proposal from the consultant is to bring that back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
I just got one thing. This is probably more for staff, but in Paramount, you know, we don't have a whole lot of people working.
Correct.
And how do you separate, say, somebody that works in the park or somebody that works in Public Works, and lights go off someplace, and somebody from Public Works has to do it, and they're not electrician? How do you compensate those kind of people, or when something happens at the pool or something like that? When they have a different job classification?
Currently, they are paid the same. So if you have a landscape maintenance worker, is getting the same as a regular maintenance worker. Now, this was brought up at one of the meetings by an employee. And the idea was to look at possibly some type of special pay for a certification that you may have. Similar to in our water department, where a water operator has to have specific license that they can expire at all. They have to maintain a certain level. Initially, what was found, and Jennifer, you can go and jump in here, that not a lot of cities do handle that special pay. Because in a sense, what you create is a different band of employee that is just for, say, plumbing, or just for electrical. And when you have a small staff and you want to interchange jobs and interchange the duties, in many cases, it prevents you from doing that because you have a specialized employee that has specialized pay for a specific thing. Would you... Is that where you had found that, right, correct?
Yeah, we went, at the request of the city, we went back out to the labor market, and we looked for the practices in the labor market. We found that general classifications, maintenance classifications, were common. Only at one city, and I can't think of the city off the top of my head, out of 10, had specialized classes, like plumber and an electrician. There was no indication of specialty pay practice at the 10 labor market agencies, based on our research.
It's more of a flexibility issue that we have with your workforce when you do have a small workforce like we have?
Madam Mayor, may I... To follow up on that, I understand what you're saying and the need for flexibility in doing that, and that there's no difference in the classifications because of that. But was there anything that you found where if there's... If they have a special certification in something, that, you know, even though they're in the maintenance crew, but they've taken, you know, the initiative to learn something that's beneficial that all the other employees want to do? Is there anything that, like, is like a little bonus pay or something for special certifications that can allow them to do electrical or plumbing where the standard maintenance worker can't? Or is that something that's expected of all standard maintenance?
It usually has to be expected in the job for a percentage of, a significant percentage of time, to warrant the specialty pay. If it's not a requirement of the job, and it's just a nice-to-have, then... And some of those services are still being contracted out, for example, then it's hard to justify that. But again, that's an internal policy determination that the city can make, if you want to move in that direction.
What is our situation with something like that?
We do not have special pay or bonus pay, if you will, for those specialized activities.
But do we have people that can only, like, you have landscapers, like we said.
Right.
If we have electrical problems or plumbing problems, do we have people that handle that in-house?
It just really depends on it. Yeah, it really depends on the issue. If it's a major electrical work that needs to be done, then no. We would have a contractor come in. If it's, you know, obviously changing a light bulb or something like that, then we do have general maintenance workers that could do things like that. Plumbing's another example. If it's a clogged toilet at the community center, one of the general maintenance workers can handle that.
Low-level stuff.
Pretty much, yeah, if you will. But the more higher-end type of work, then we contract out.
You're going to contract that out.
Yeah, so...
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
I had a question. I think with our... I think a lot of the concern here is for our public work employees. It seems like they do a lot. And in comparison to other cities, I wanted to ask you what your observation was. How many of the other cities like ours had union representation for their public work employees? Because I feel like we ask a lot of our public works employees to have a certain category that they are, like they were saying, landscaping, but then in a pinch, we may need them to dig a hole, or we may need them to fix a plumbing problem. And they're not being compensated for their skill level. So I think that they need to have some type of a bonus incentive to where if they can, if they're doing more than just their classification, they do need to receive pay for that. But I guess my initial question was, how many are union? Because if you have a union, that's the type of representation you get to make sure that they're being fairly compensated. And I know the city has always been reluctant to bring in a union because wages will go up, and that's what they will negotiate for. So how many unions did you see?
I would have to go back and research that. Every city is comprised differently, and they have a different number of unions. So that's something we can go back out and gauge.
Well, I think to have fair representation for our public works, I think we need to look to see how many cities do have union representation. Because they would be the ones negotiating so that we don't have to ask questions like, "Well, what if it's a plumber? What if it's a landscaper? What if he does electrical?" Your unions can coordinate that, and then they get paid appropriately. So I would like to know that.
Madam Mayor, if I can just follow up with that. Did you find anything, I remember in the wage compensation thing, in our public works department? Because you did across-the-board comparisons, union or non-union, where we were out of sync there?
We made the job matches based on the general classification. And again, when we went back after the fact to see if there were specialized classes in the labor market, we did not find that practice. So the job matches that were made were accurate.
I think what you were probably asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, the compensation part.
Right.
Yeah, the compensation is what she was asking. Were our maintenance workers in Public Works, were they close to being paid similar to other cities, or...
Because you didn't define them out when you did that comparison, union, non-union. You just did, you looked at wages, and if we were...
Yeah, so we look at base salary and then total compensation. So benefits sometimes are specific to certain bargaining groups.
Right.
But again, I don't have, I represented, I presented that October 2018, so I'd have to revisit that report.
That's what I remember, is that you didn't present anything significant there, so that's what I was asking.
We had questions, and they weren't answered. And we're going to get answers at this one. Because I specifically asked about compensation in comparison to other cities. Because my concern is, I just want to make sure our public works are getting paid a fair amount that is comparable to other cities. Because we don't, as John said, we don't want to lose our employees. our employees to other cities, so we want to make sure that their pay is comparable.
And I, and I agree with you, and that's the question I'm trying to get answered, because I don't recall you presenting anything specifically where we were out of sync.
Correct, yeah.
Well, I also did provide aggregate results by groups, by employee groups.
Right.
So that's why it's not standing out at this time, but something that we can talk about.
Yeah, and that's why it was a concern to me last time, because it's a good way to overlook when you say that there were averages, and that's what I was concerned about. Because if you take your hot, top paid and then your low pay, and then you say they're average because they meet in the middle, it's not a true reflection of whether or not a maintenance person is making what they should be making in com, you know, in compar, comparable to other cities. And I think those were my questions last time, and they weren't answered. And I think that's what, uh, Councilmember Lemmons is asking as well.
So, for point of clarification, the results were represented with the market median, so it wasn't the average in the individual classification? The aggregate results were by employee group. So the data sheets that were provided would show you exactly how the, uh, maintenance workers fared in the labor market using the market median.
Okay, that's what...
So not being skewed by high and low data.
Okay.
I believe, um, uh, we may have the presentation from October, if, um, that would help the discussion. I think that...
Maybe we need to get that broken down between all of us at some point.
Sure, I could provide in, in the, in the weekly memo or something.
Now that you, yeah, that the question's kind of lined out, if you could maybe re-present, um, here's the, the report. Now, is there...
Not the way they have it.
Maintenance supervisor, maintenance workers at the...
Yeah, maintenance workers.
We're talking about. So that was one of the ones that city was six point four three below.
So in a labor market of ten agencies, um, now that I'm reading the categories here, the left-hand side of the data represents base salary, the right-hand side of the, the data sheet represents total compensation. So the maintenance worker had nine out of ten matches, so that's a solid amount of data that was collected.
Mm-hmm.
And they, the individuals were faring 1.4% behind the labor market. Um, if you look at the market median, so again, the middle of the pack, not the average, which skews data, and then the mean, which would be the average, was, uh, 3%, 3.08% behind the market. So you're talking about one to, one and a half to 3% behind the market.
Here.
Okay. That's for base salary. When you factor, when you factor in total compensation, the benefits package for the maintenance workers provided here at the city, then those individuals actually are 4.74% above the labor market.
That's kind of what I recalled, but, yeah, it's good to have it pointed out specifically again. And so, I, yeah, if, if we could get this one again, too.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, in our package, yeah.
In your weekly memo.
In case we want to break it down and, and, you know.
Be happy to provide that.
Come up with any more, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ramos.
When is this going to be finalized?
Jennifer, uh, when is it going to be finalized? Would you think by the end of the month? We would?
We're, we're trending for the end of the month. We're, our target date is January 23rd, and that would be, uh, finalizing any, based on any feedback we get from department heads and employees about the classification piece, and then wrapping up the internal equity and salary recommendations.
Thank you.
And if that, if that holds true, then I, I will have that for you on the agenda for approval at the first meeting in February.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Item eight, public hearing, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, um, 2018, 2019.
Yes, Madam Mayor. For about, uh, 22 years now, we've received a grant from the, the federal government for public safety programs, but before we spend the grant money, uh, we need to report on what specifically we plan to use the funds for. So, here's Adriana Lopez, our Public Safety Director, to tell us what the plan is. Adriana?
Thank you, John, Councilmembers and Mayor. Uh, as John mentioned, for the past 22 years, the City of Paramount has received federal funding to supplement local law enforcement via combination of grants. With the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, also known as JAG, uh, it's been awarded to the City of Paramount for the last 12 years for a total of approximately $400,000. The award total can vary between cities and from year to year, and is also determined by a formula that considers population, crime statistics, and state allocation. This year, the city's allocation is slightly under $21,000. There is no local match for this grant, and the grant does require for the city to develop a proposed use of the funding, also conducting a public hearing to discuss the proposed use of the funds, and to prepare quarterly reports. What we're proposing to use these funds for is for probation compliance checks, parole compliance checks, truancy and curfew sweeps. And with that, it's recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and authorize the use of the grants to pay for the programs specified in this report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
In the past 12 years, Adriana, we received a little over $400,000, and then this year, um, we're receiving a little under $21,000. It seems like it keeps getting lower.
Uh, Mayor, it does, and that's, that's one of the reasons why they use the formula, because they do take into consideration our crime stats, and as we see a, a decrease in our crime stats, then we see a decrease in funding. So we're a victim of our own success.
Thank you. Okay, any questions for Adriana? Uh, motion, please?
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, sweeties. This is a public hearing. Okay. Um, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor and opposition?
Will we close public hearing?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gien?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Okay, item nine, award of contract, um, for hardscape concrete maintenance for fiscal year 2019, a staff report, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this next item is for a contract for our annual sidewalk project. This is our second year in a row that we've been, that we've taken a different approach. Rather than the one large capital project that we used to do, we're treating this as more of a maintenance agreement. Um, so whenever there's broken sidewalks or curbs and gutters that need repairing, we call the contractor that we're asking you to award the bid to, call them up, they come out and repair it. Uh, this seemed to work very well for us last year from a management's perspective, and we also received a better price than we would have with a large capital improvement project. So with that, I want to turn over to our Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa, to tell us all about it. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, an RFP for hardscape concrete maintenance services was released in November of 2018. Uh, in previous years, um, this was handled, as indicated, as a CIP project, where a list of sidewalk and curb repairs were compiled and constructed at one time. However, as we have experienced in the past, these types of repairs are needed throughout the year, and more cities are opting for an on-call hardscape concrete maintenance contractor in order to handle these repairs as the need arises. This allows us to secure a competitive price and have a more efficient response. Although three-bid packets were picked up by contractors, one bid was submitted, and that bid is from CJ Concrete Construction Incorporated. Their pricing is consistent with our most recent street projects and with current industry standard pricing. This contract, again, is for on-call, on-call curb gutter and sidewalk repairs for the remaining of this fiscal year for an amount not to exceed $150,000, with an option to extend administratively, limiting adjustments to the CPI with a maximum allowed of 4% annually. CJ Concrete Construction has similar contracts with surrounding cities such as Lakewood and Long Beach. At this time, it is recommended that the City Council award the contract for hardscape maintenance services to CJ Construct, Concrete Construction in the amount of $150,000 for fiscal year 2019, and authorize the mayor or her designate to execute the agreement. That concludes my report, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Adriana?
I do. Adriana, when you award a contract, and this is from my own knowledge, uh, when you award a contract, is there a later, another meeting to make sure that there are prevailing wages, that the company that has been awarded the contract is paying their employees prevailing wages? And the reason why I'm asking is because I just went to some, a class, and it talked about prevailing wages, and it's incumbent upon the city to make sure that these companies, even though they're, you're getting the award for the, the amount that they, they're, they bid on the contract, they get the con, the contract with the city, the city has liability in ma, in ensuring that their employees of that company are making prevailing, uh, wages. Do we have a separate meeting? Um, because that's what I understood it to be, that after they get awarded the contract, there's supposed to be another meeting where they present documents that say that they have, in the past, paid their employees prevailing wages?
I have typically seen that when it comes to, like, federal grants that require it. I don't believe ours require it, but I'm chugging with the city attorney there to see.
Our, the city doesn't require another meeting, but our documentation, our, our requests for proposals do require that as mandated by law. And obviously, and you're right, Councilmember, if they don't, um, then we hold them responsible for, because that's part of their bid as they submit.
Right, and I thought that, that's what the past rationale has been, that it's there, it lies, um, on them. However, that it is incumbent upon the city as well to make sure that they are paying those prevailing wages, so that might be something that we need to instill in future contracts to make sure that, you know, just because we give an employer a certain amount that seems legit, we need to make sure that their employees are getting paid prevailing wages.
Is that the wording in the RFP? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and when we, when we go out to bid, um, that's part of the bid package, is that state law requires that they have to pay prevailing wages. If we, if we find that they're not later on, of course, we're not going to find out that they don't, then they are in violation of the contract, but they're required under state law to do that.
I think it's something we need to do as well, to make viability issues.
But it's certainly, it certainly is an added step to meet with them beforehand, to make sure that they do. It's with the Department of Industrial Relations, but the way we do it right now, we are covered legally.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gien?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 10, uh, citizen satisfaction show-up services. Um, a follow-up, may I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the, the quality of public safety services has always been a long-time priority of the council. Um, so a number of years ago, we instituted a quality assurance program to ask residents how, um, we and the Sheriff's Department are doing, how we are performing. Um, so the results are in for 2018, and they look very good. So here's Adriana Lopez to give us details on the program and the results for 2018. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, like John mentioned, this is something that we've brought before you on an annual basis. So I'll start with the basic background for this, um, survey. And since 1997, the public safety staff began collecting data of routine law enforcement and public safety services through quality assurance calls. This data is collected and used to create what we refer to as the In-Land Line of Duty Report. So what exactly do we do? Our procedure is that every day, public safety staff conducts quality assurance calls by randomly selecting calls, uh, that were placed the previous working day. We do not call victims, or, um, actually, I should say, we do not call victims of a violent crime, so that would include something like rape, assault, homicide, because we believe that it would be insensitive, and also, it wouldn't be appropriate for them to be surveyed for this quality assurance. So that's what we do, and so four calls are collected. Um, what we do is we break it down into the PM shift and the evening shift, or day or PM shifts, as we refer to them. The calls that we place are scripted for consistency, and we ask staff to ask a total of five questions. So, the caller is asked to give us their level of satisfaction as it relates to dispatching services, response time, law enforcement, or their interaction with a community service officer as well, and then overall service. In addition, uh, we ask them if they were provided a satisfaction form compliance. So the ratings are under the category of very satisfied, satisfied, dissatisfied, or indifferent. So that gives you an overall summary. As you can see here in the top line, it's, uh, very satisfied, and we ask them once again about their interaction with dispatch, response time, a reporting officer, and then their overall rating. So very satisfied, we have 13.48 overall rating, and satisfied, we have 84, which is the largest category, or the largest number percentage. Indifferent, it's very low, and then we continue on with dissatisfied. 98% of the respondents were either satisfied or very satisfied with the overall service. So as I mentioned earlier in my report, we create a very comprehensive report, which we refer to in the line of duty, and this is what we do. The information that we enter is accessible, and we can query this, uh, report at any time. We blanked out the name of the person who placed the call for service to protect their identity, and as you can see, most of these will show satisfied or very satisfied as overall rating. And it gives you the type of call. We also discuss the citizen satisfaction form. These are two examples. We have, uh, we blocked out once again the information of the reporting party, and here on the left-hand side, you're going to see that it, that involves a deputy, Deputy Rojas, and then the one on the right-hand side involves a community service officer. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions, but Madam Mayor, if I could just make a quick comment.
Yes.
I noted that, um, you said that you have the data since 1997, but I know this program started in about 1986, but it goes to show the evolution of the program, because I know back then, we used to just distribute the satisfaction cards, but we would get maybe one or two back out of hundreds that were distributed, so the follow-up calls have really made a difference in gaining that data, so, you know. I'm thinking that the next evolution might be something electronic even. Yes.
Adriana, my, um, brother, pardon me, my nephew and my sister went into the sheriff's station this past week because my nephew's license plate was stolen, and my nephew and sister were so impressed with staff, and then within a few days, there was a card mailed to them, I believe?
Yes.
And my sister, they filled it out and returned it. They were so impressed. And then over the Christmas holidays, I was driving through the city, and my girlfriend's dress was hanging out the door, and the deputy put the light on us, and so I'm like, oh, God, did I not stop at a stop sign? And so I pulled over, and he says, ma'am, he says, your friend's dress is hanging out the door. I said, okay, thank you. My heart skipped a beat. I thought I was going to get a ticket. But anyway, so, um, very pleased with our sheriff. Thank you, sweetie.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Adriana or comments?
No, I might make a comment also, kind of along the same line, because, uh, was it, it was a couple of weeks ago, somebody tried to break into my son-in-law's truck, smashed the window out and took some things out of the backseat, but then just sat it down on the ground and took off, but he was very satisfied, too, with the, the reports and so on and so forth, so.
Thank you, sir.
He couldn't get the window replaced right away and then saved it up.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, do we need to file and receive and file?
Take a motion, receive and file.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please. Yeah, we have a motion from Councilmember Hoffmeyer, second by Councilmember Vice Mayor Hanson, and may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gien?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 11, amendment agreement with the YMCA use of city facilities for youth programming. May I have a staff report, please?
Uh, yes, you may, Madam Mayor. Um, over the last two years, we've established a pretty close working relationship with our local chapter of the YMCA. Uh, they've provided staffing for new, as well as some of our existing programs and services to the community. Um, so we've been, talks with them recently to discuss, uh, providing lifeguarding services and oversight for our summer open swim time at Paramount Pool. Um, this is what we call our recreation swim program. Uh, we've agreed on a proposed cost for providing this service, and with your approval tonight, we would like to amend our existing agreement with the Y to include this, this type of service. So here is David Johnson, our Parks and Rec Director, to tell us more about it. David?
Thank you, John, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. So as John mentioned, we'll be going over, we're proposing a change to the comprehensive agreement we have with the YMCA. Uh, but as some kind of background here, this is something very similar to what we experienced with public works in the 90s. Uh, we're looking for some contracted services to provide some efficiencies. Uh, the YMCA, we're lucky that we do have a local YMCA that is part of a nationally recognized and respected, um, nonprofit. Um, and so, our relationship began in November 2017, when they, uh, assumed control of our youth basketball program. Uh, they've been successfully running that into, since 2017. Uh, we came back to council in 2018, um, and we had that more comprehensive agreement, uh, where we included additional services, uh, and the opportunity to expand services in that agreement. Uh, and from that 2018 agreement, uh, that's where you see, it, it rolled everything up. Youth basketball, their after-school program at, at Mariposa, their camping experience at Camp Oaks, and then the swim lesson program that they took over last year. Uh, to provide that, we do provide them a $25,000 subsidy to provide those four programming services. Youth basketball, their after-school program at Mariposa, their camping experience at Camp Oaks, and then the swim lesson program that they took over last year. To provide that, we do provide them a $25,000 subsidy to provide those four programming services. What we're looking at tonight is amending that comprehensive agreement to now include the summer recreation swim program. Our recreation swim program, it never operates out of profit, obviously. We actually subsidize it, so the revenue that we receive from the kids coming in and the parents coming in, paying their fees to do recreation swim, it does not equal the cost of providing that service. So, last year, we had a net cost of about $45,000. We are recommending adding that amount to the YMCA subsidy. They currently receive, again, $25,000. We would be adding $45,000 to that subsidy for a total of $7,000, $70,000 subsidy to provide now five youth services. There's some efficiencies that this does provide the YMCA in providing if they do take over recreation swim. When they do swim lessons in the morning and swim lessons in the evening, there is that break where we were running rec swim in between. It is difficult to staff for a couple hours, have a three-hour break, and then staff again for a couple hours, so that would assist the Y in staffing this in a more efficient way. The YMCA also does their lifeguarding differently than we do. I would say it's actually probably an improvement. We use Red Cross standards. We actually have zones of observational control, and so, we have guards on tower on the deck observing operational areas regardless of generally how many people are in the water. They actually, YMCA bases that on a staff ratio of 1 to 25, so every 25 people that are in the water, they have to have a guard on station. So, it's a little different method, and I think it's probably, you end up seeing more lifeguards on deck than what we currently have. Now, the YMCA also has a requirement that anybody participates in one of the programs, they have to sign a waiver of liability. So, in our program, yes, people just came in, they paid their money, they went into the pool. So, that will change, the YMCA is going to require that everyone has a signed waiver liability, so they're going to aggressively go into our community, similar to how we do it when we go out to our community and sell those city resident wristbands. They'll be doing something similar, but they won't be doing wristbands. They'll be doing these little cards, so you essentially kind of become a member of the local YMCA. So, once they have that little fob, they'll be able to go in and scan. That fob will identify them as a resident or a non-resident, so that will help the Y determine which fee they paid to enter the pool. So, again, it'll be, it'll be a little problematic at the beginning as people have to understand that they just can't walk, and they're going to have to have that on file, but once they have it on file, they're good to go. Now, part of the reason we're doing this is because, obviously, we all know the minimum wage for the state of California keeps rising. We have several more years to go as they incrementally increase this. This moves that responsibility now over to the YMCA, off of us. Now, they did this with, when we did swim lessons, when they took that program over, they hired, I think, probably the majority of our staff that were, you know, again, we have, these are seasonal employees for us, they're part-timers, they're age 16 to 21, so they will pick those, they'll interview, they'll hire them. Jeremy, who's the executive director for the local YMCA, the Little Studios YMCA, he is with us tonight, he let me know that when they took over swim lessons, they hired 17 lifeguards to run the swim lesson program. All 17 were former city of Paramount lifeguards.
Wonderful.
So, something similar will happen here. When we let go of this program, they're going to have to hire more lifeguards, and our staff will apply for those jobs, and because we did such a job, good job training them, I'm sure they'll get the job. And then, there's some indirect savings here because that is a large hire of employees that we typically do each summer. That is a lot of paperwork for human resources and for finance. We bring them in, again, they're seasonal, we bring them in, we process, we transition them out after another summer. That's a lot of paperwork, that paperwork goes away, so there's a lot of time savings for our other departments. There'll be some minor direct savings as well. We have about $9,000 in the department division for supplies that will be let go. And then, fees for service, we currently, we haven't changed our rate for entering the pool since 2012, and so, you know, that, if that were to change, the YMCA has to come to us, we have to mutually agree upon it. We would bring that before the city council when there's a fee change like that. It is very likely that they'll recommend a rate for our non-residents to go a little bit higher. We do have very reasonable rates, and again, it hasn't changed since 2012. And that, whoops, there shouldn't be another slide there, it's not there, rats. My apologies. So, we're recommending that the city council approve this agreement with its changes. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for David?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gyan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 12, Report Development Activity Update. Staff, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council, this next one is kind of a fun one. There's a lot of development activity going on in the community. Much of this finished, and then some of it started too in 2018, and it signals to us that our local economy is in pretty darn good shape. So, I recently provided this information to you in a weekly memo, however, I felt to be beneficial to share this publicly as I'm sure you may be asked by residents, say, what's going on over there, what's going on over here? So, with that, I want to turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Chun, to give you some of those answers. Kevin?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. It's been a while since we've done this for you, but we wanted to start off the new year with an update on some of the current and recently completed development activities in town. Just as a reminder for you and our audience members, the Community Development Department is responsible for overseeing development activities that occur on private property. The Community Development Department is comprised of two divisions, Planning and Building and Safety, that work hand in hand with each other to provide a vision for a safe, healthy, and prosperous Paramount community. 2018 proved to be another busy year for our planning staff. To summarize, staff processed these items and gained approval from the Planning Commission, 13 CUPs, one ZODA, which you remember included the landmark sweeping zoning amendments that you approved last year for the city's manufacturing zones, one unclassified use permit, three general plan amendments, four zone changes, and one request for zoning code There were also 11 Development Review Board applications that were approved, and staff assisted with 36 over-the-counter administrative actions for residential room additions. 2018 was also another busy year for our building and safety staff. They issued 1,279 construction permits, which include building, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, and grading permits, and it also conducted just under 14,000 inspections. And now, going into our updates, I'll start with the Clear Water Crossing Project. Of course, this is the development that includes Pizza Press, Stinking Crawfish, Habit Burger, Waba Grill, and Chipotle. It's the former site of the Rosewood and Red Rose Plaza. The Paramount Redevelopment Agency acquired the property in 2009 and 2011, and it was developed by the Arroyo Seco Development Group in partnership with Northgate Gonzalez. The project was completed in two phases, with the last phase wrapping up last year. Next is the new Horchataria Ria Luna at the former bank and dance studio building. Construction began last year and is expected to be completed by late spring. This will be the flagship Horchataria Ria Luna location. IHOP is the city's first national chain sit-down restaurant that was completed last year in conjunction with a city commercial rehabilitation project. The overall project includes a new paint scheme throughout, matching metal louvers, stone veneer on the existing columns, wood panels, decorative metal awnings at the front entry, decorative lighting, and new wall signs. The Brooker Project was another city commercial rehabilitation project, and then, as you can see, this project includes a new paint scheme, matching laser-cut metal awnings and wall panels, decorative lighting, new wall signage, new tile roofing on the mansards, and the refurbishment of the existing monument sign. Of course, this was an important project for the city's downtown as it was the last remaining property in need of renovation. The Magaña and Montenegro Project is a 2,560-square-foot, two-story office building that was built on a vacant lot where fire-damaged residential structures were demolished in 2010. This is another project that has helped to improve the aesthetics on Paramount Boulevard. The next project is a remodel of a multi-suite retail building formerly occupied by Schott's Bar. It was completed in early December of last year. As you can see, the building was attractively updated with a decorative stone veneer, metal awnings, new landscaping. Also, the old pole sign was replaced with a modern monument sign, which fulfills the city's longtime goal of eliminating pole signs citywide. The owners are also currently working to secure new tenants. Construction plans for a new development at the current site of the Five Star Market were submitted to the Building and Safety Division for Plan Check. A new four-suite structure will replace the existing deteriorated buildings. The elevations of the building will feature a combination of stucco and cultured stone, various wall projections, a cornice, a prominent entry feature to the market to add architectural interest, a metal-clad sunshade, storefront windows, and decorative lights. Once completed, this development will too vastly improve the look in this part of town. Next, last year, the Development Review Board approved a remodel of the Jack in the Box on Alondra Boulevard near Downey Avenue. Now, this is somewhat of a peculiar project as the existing restaurant is still very attractive. However, it's part of Jack in the Box's campaign to update their locations. The architect is currently touching on construction plans and will be submitting them for Plan Check very soon. This is another city commercial rehabilitation project. Construction plans are approved, and bid packages are now being prepared. Once the low bidding contractor is determined, staff will bring this project to the city council to consider an award of contract. The property owners are addressing the rear building and parking lot separately. In addition, both pole signs at this location will be removed as part of the improvements. And again, once completed, this project will greatly improve the appearance on the north end of Paramount Boulevard. And this is an eight-unit housing project. The developer bought the properties in December 2016 and has expressed an eagerness to finish and recoup his investment. Ongoing problems, including foundation work, have now been resolved, and the contractor continues with framing, as you can see in the top-right picture. This is a 30-unit, single-family home project on former horse-stable properties and underutilized portions of the Home Depot parking lot. This project is now completed, and the last of the properties were sold last year. Following recent city council approval of the general plan amendment and zone change to allow for the development, construction is now underway for this 12-unit housing project for the vacant site, or on the vacant site at the northeast corner of Somerset and Texaco. The contractor owner has constructed the perimeter block walls with vines and is starting construction on six of the homes. Four infill development homes are under construction at this project location that the Development Review Board approved about a year ago. The homes will include a stucco exterior with medium texture, ledgestone wainscoting, multi-level roof lines with flat concrete tile, varying building insets and projections, window trim, and shutters. The owner will also provide a common barbecue area and toddloch. 11 units are under construction on this property that happens to join back-to-back, the Gundry Avenue project from my previous slide. The project was also approved by the Development Review Board. The design of the units includes a two-color stucco exterior, ledgestone veneer accents, and multi-level roof lines with clay tile. The developer will also install a children's playground and two barbecue areas. This is the new self-storage facility that replaces the Los Compadres Portieria. The building facades incorporate varying building projections, metal wall finishes, metal-clad canopies applied to a portion of the north and west elevations, and an expansive use of glass. Drought-tolerant landscaping is also incorporated into a new front planner that extends 30 feet inward from the sidewalk. The owner contractor completed a 2,370-square-foot warehouse and office building several months ago. The contemporary design with decorative metal mesh on the west side of the front elevation is a distinct architectural improvement. The occupant is a drywall contractor that relocated from Alondra near Lakewood. Exterior finish work will begin soon on this new building on this previously vacant 7,500-square-foot lot. The front elevation will include a sand-stucco exterior with decorative insets, a dual-glaze anodized aluminum window, and recessed roll-up doors. The property will also be landscaped with drought-tolerant plants. And finally, construction plans are in Plan Check for this project to demolish a legal non-conforming house in the central industrial district and construct a 10,432-square-foot, five-suite building for industrial tenants that will need to comply with M2 zoning requirements. As John mentioned, development activity is an indicator of the city's health, and the ongoing volume of ongoing development in Paramount, both commercial and residential, is very encouraging. The Community Development Staff hopes to continue fostering these types of positive developments and building upon our success. If you have any questions regarding any of these projects, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kevin? Receive and file, please.
Motion to receive and file a report.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gyan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Okay, at this time, are there any comments from council members? Do you have any comments? Okay, Vice Mayor Hanson?
I didn't need to go first, but I will. Actually, the mayor and I attended at Casadaleto their blanket giveaway again this year.
Oh, yeah, that was wonderful.
For those that have never been, they put on a program every year. They, this year, it was an outstanding program, actually. They had some singers that I thought they were probably, what would you say, Diane?
Ages.
11 years old?
Age, probably five, five to probably 15 years.
These two little girls had voices that knocked your socks off. It was just amazing how they did, and each year, they give away right at 500 blankets to people. Also, Dr.
Ellen.
Ellen was there, and he donated 50 turkeys that were given away also, so it was quite a, quite an evening, and they had us help pass out some blankets, so on and so forth, so it was a lot of fun, especially for some of the little ones. But the program that they did was, it was an outstanding program. The singers were just amazing. I couldn't believe it when they started singing. It was fantastic.
They've been doing that for how many years?
Years.
Quite a few years. I've been to three or four of them. They seemed to always invite us, and, which is really nice, and then they really, for those that never been, it's a worthwhile thing to go and watch, and they entertain us royally all the time when we're there.
Very nice.
Very nice thing to do. I don't have any mosquito report, except I just got the end of the day or yesterday.
It's too cold. Did you hear Hoffmeyer?
They're gearing up, I'll tell you. They're gearing up for it already because they expect it. They held things pretty good this past year. I think there were 32 West Nile cases in our district, which was below, but their calls for service were way higher than what they had been in past years, so they're gearing up again already, so if anybody has any mosquito problems, give them a call.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we had a successful clutter-free Paramount event on Saturday, so a big thank you to the volunteers that came out to help us on early Saturday morning. We had 430, 432 vehicles go through, which was up from last year. That was our, last year was our first one, so if you recall, last year, we had a 15% decrease in the amount of tonnage that we picked up in the first quarter of last year of large abandoned items, and we would like to think that it was because of the drop-off program, so we're excited to see if this is going to help again for this first quarter.
I might make a comment on that too, because I was one of the vehicles that was there.
Yeah.
Dropping off some electronic stuff, and it seemed to be very well-run, so I congratulate you and your team for putting that together.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, okay, we're going to close session, evaluation of public employee city manager pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, and at this time, I will adjourn this meeting in honor of Teresa Ohanaga, who passed away Monday evening. She was a longtime resident of this community, and she loved Paramount. As a matter of fact, I received a call from her Monday, the day of the train ad asked me, Diane, are you going to be on the train? And unfortunately, I wasn't able to get on till later that evening. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to get on until later that evening. No, my mother was in the hospital, so I didn't write, I didn't write it that evening. So, she passed away, so we'll keep her in her, I keep her and her family in our prayers, and so I adjourned this meeting in her honor. At this time, we will go into the successor agency for the Paramount Redevelopment Agency. May I have roll call of councilmembers, please?
Councilmember Guillen?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Mayor Martinez?
Here. Are there any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, consent calendar.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Here.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. At this time, I adjourned this meeting.